...Board of September 5th, 2024. Please rise to the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. The Town of Burlington, beholden, the September 5th, 2024 meeting is a hybrid meeting. The governor issued an executive order on March 12th, 2020, authorizing remote meetings under the general law, Chapter 38, Section 20, and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, including permitting remote meetings and participation until March 31st, 2025.
As always, members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting, but please note, while an option for remote attendance is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast. Members of the public with a specific interest and a specific item on the agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. To attend remotely, you may do so via the following: townofberlincolnwebx.com. Our meeting number is 2343-291-0654, and our meeting password is 1645. You can join us by phone at 617-315-0704. You can also find these links on the town calendar at Burlington.org. Please be aware that using your web browser to log on to the meeting will not work, and make sure that you are using dedicated WebEx software. We found a lot of glitches in the web-based platform. And if you are looking to participate remotely, raise your hand. Staff will send you a request to unmute at the appropriate time. We're being broadcast on the BCAT Government Channel, Comcast 9, RCN 15, Verizon 41. We're streamed on BCAT Live via the BCAT Government Facebook page.
Okay. Thank you, Liz. Next is public participation. Is there anyone in the audience or online who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing no one? Thank you. Announcements?
Yes, so the Town Center Beer Garden is happening Thursdays in September, which includes today, right now. So it's going to be September 5th, the 11th, the 18th, and the 25th, and each of those will be from 4:30 to 8:30 p.m., and that's in the Pocket Park that's located at 202 Cambridge Street, right in the town center. September Town Meeting will be happening on Monday, September 23rd, at 7:00 p.m. That's at the Burlington High School Auditorium. And many of you may have noticed, as you drive by the Burlington Mall, that there's a large tent up now in the parking lot that was, that's for Flip Circus that was recently permitted by the board. They've gotten the rest of their permits, and I think they're opening this weekend, and I think they're here for the next two to three weeks.
Great, thank you. The Beer Garden is at September 5th, 12th? Then it would be the 19th? Is it just on Thursdays?
5/11.
It says 5/11. Is it 5 plus 7 is 12?
It would be 12, yeah, sorry. That's 12th, 19th, 26th. Off by a day.
Thank you. So tonight, the 12th, the 19th, and the 26th.
Yes.
Okay, great. Legal notice of interest? None? Nonapprovals? None? Administrative matters? None. Matters of appointment? Okay, we've got Item A, a public hearing, the application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.2.6.11 Restaurants of the zoning bylaws, 184 Cambridge Street. Sam Reedy Delight Inc. is the applicant.
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Attorney Courtney Ball. I represent Sam Reedy Delight, Inc., which is a Massachusetts corporation. So they'll be running an Indian restaurant as a new purchase of the existing, you know, space with no changes to the floor plan or anything, which is down at 184 Cambridge Street. It is in the General Business and Central Business District. Ultimately, it's in the town center. So the use is permitted by special permit. We feel that it's compatible with our uses in the town center. There is sufficient parking. We will have a employee parking plan, as is currently in use with the current restaurant that's there. There are exhaust systems in place. There's a maintenance plan for the grease trap, and there's a dumpster plan, you know, dumpster maintenance dumping schedule, I should say. It's certainly the owners will, you know, bring experience from other ownership of another restaurant and restaurant experience. They will be considerate of the neighborhood and the operation of the restaurant, and it'll be a delicious, another delicious food option for the residents, and of course, additional tax base for the town. So we're seeking a special permit with reasonable conditions.
Thank you very much. Staff, any concerns? Items?
We don't have any concerns. Again, this is kind of just, again, a change of ownership, so it's really just to ensure that the new ownership structure has a new, has an understanding of the existing special permit conditions.
Okay.
And so that's the purpose of this.
Which one is this? Sweet ginger?
It's on the other, it's on the other side of that plaza, near the TD Bank.
Okay.
I can pull it up right now.
Currently called the Almida Cuisine, which is the furthest unit to the right facing.
I'm pulling up right now, just to give you guys a sense that this is just the orange itself.
Yeah, next to, yeah, it's to the.
It's the last tenant in here.
To the.
Oh, okay, okay. I was thinking it was the other side, okay.
Yep, so that's where it is.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to our Planning Board members. Let's start off with Mr. Covino, to my right.
I am all set, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. LaRue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a quick question for staff. Does the special permit mention anything about changing lights? I can't remember if this was the location that quite some years ago, there were some changing bright neon, not flashing, but changing colored lights.
Yeah.
Was that this location?
I don't recall.
I'm not sure, but is there anything in the special permit saying you can't have changing colored lights?
I'm pretty sure that in our lighting conditions, there is something to that effect.
Okay, that's all I'm looking for.
Standard architectural lighting, yep.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sutherland.
No questions.
Ms. Natola.
So was the dumpster for this in the back? Is that where they all put the dumpsters? I was wondering if it's in the back.
Okay. Isn't the back?
Because I didn't see it on the plan anywhere where it is.
Okay, thank you. My only question would be, do you have an existing restaurant now, or is this the first time going in a restaurant?
Do you want to answer? Madonna owns a restaurant in Cambridge, and he's the treasurer of the corporation. Sergeot, the president behind me here, will be the manager of record for the, you know, for the liquor license, per the common vic license. So I think between the two of them, there's some, how long have you owned Cambridge for?
Like 20 years.
Okay.
Yeah.
And does this particular, the Alamad Cuisine, did that have a liquor license? Do you know?
Currently, there is a wine and malts, and we're going to update that, so they can serve all alcohol beverages.
Okay.
But there's no bar or anything. It's just table service.
Okay. That's all I had. This is a public hearing. It's a special permit, though, so we do have two members absent, so it's going to require a unanimous decision. So just to give you that sense, you can either continue based on that, or, you know, we can make the decision tonight.
Yeah, we'd like you to make a decision tonight, if that's all right.
Let's open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, anybody online?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Let's call that a 5-0-0.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of Sam Reedy Delight, Inc., for a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.6.11 Restaurants of Article 4 of the Town of Burlington zoning bylaws to permit the reuse of an existing restaurant space for a new full-service restaurant operator known as Aroma Delight for property located in the General Business BG and Central Business CBD districts at 184 Cambridge Street, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit A attached.
Okay, is there a second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All's 5-0-0. Just what they can, what you're talking about here is, we do allow architectural lighting to be white and not moving in intensity, but we don't, any of the changing, flashing, anything beyond that. So the details would be in the decision.
I just have one comment, and I hope I'm not being too nitpicky, but the current one is Section 4.2.6.10.
Mm-hmm.
And I do see it shows.
That's been changed, that as part of the bylaw updates that went through in May Town Meeting, that those numbers shifted by one number in the use table. So I was, I saw that, and I made sure that we were using the correct number.
Good catch, excellent.
It is a good catch.
Up until May, you would have been correct, but since the updates that went through at May Town Meeting, it's now 11.
All right, perfect.
Well worth the price of admission for your complaints.
Well, thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, good luck, and welcome to Burlington.
Long time, welcome.
Okay, great. Item B, we've got a public hearing for the application of approval for a special permit pursuant to 4.2.6.10 Restaurant, fast food, order takeout of the zoning bylaws, 91 Middlesex Turnpike. Life Alive Cafe LLC is the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the Record Attorney, Mark Vaughn, with Reema Bronstein representing the applicant in connection with the application before you. With me is Chris Hogan, who is Vice President of Operations for Life Alive Cafe, and also we have Chef Leah Dubois.
Am I pronouncing that correct?
Dubois.
Dubois, sorry. Dubois, who is Vice President of Culinary. So very excited to be here in connection with the application. This is for the property that is known as Burlington Square. This is a different building from the building that we had been discussing with the board previously as part of the minor engineering change and whatnot. This is 91 Middlesex Turnpike, and the specific space that Life Alive Cafe is looking to locate in is the space that has been occupied by Blaze Pizza. So they're actually taking over the same exact tenant space. There's no expansion of square footage. They're actually going to have less seating than what Blaze Pizza had. They're going to have 92 seats in total, and I think Blaze Pizza actually was permitted for in excess of 100 seats. But this, thank you, Caleb, this plan shows, you know, the location of the space. I think the board is hopefully familiar with, you know, the corner that we're talking about there. But again, they're taking over same exact spot, obviously interior renovations to accommodate their, their brand and use, but there's an outdoor patio area that would remain as it is today. So I think Chris and Leah can certainly speak to their concept better than I, but I know that they are very well-regarded and well-respected in this particular healthful food, organic food industry, and they prioritize sustainability in food sourcing, as well as responsible food service in the context of reusable ceramic dishes, compostable to-go packaging, and things like that. But I know that they're very excited about being able to become part of the Burlington landscape here. They have locations in, I believe it's Cambridge and Harvard Square, South End, Legacy Place, Dedham, and.
Currently 10 locations, between Boston, Cambridge, and Dedham.
So we, your first ones a little bit north of the Pike, then?
Actually Lowell. We're celebrating 20 years in Lowell.
No kidding? Wow.
And then Salem, we have one in Salem, and then we came to Cambridge, Boston, and we ventured out a year ago to Dedham, and heading to Union Square in Somerville, Jamaica Plain, and if all goes well, Burlington.
Okay, great.
Must be doing it right.
Right. Okay. Do you want to expand any more on the menu or the concept?
I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, yeah. We are eat positive, live positive is what we go by. Our food is all organic, scratch-made kitchen in the truest sense of a scratch-made kitchen. Every cafe makes its own stuff, has a chef within the cafe. And the food is not only beautiful, but really good for you. A lot of people comment back to us that they feel better after eating at our cafes, and it's a, it's a really cool concept. The cafes inside are beautiful. They're each reflective of the community that they're in, the colors, the designs, the soft spaces and things are like, I just say, nobody builds restaurants like we do anymore, because I don't think they do. So I encourage you to try to get the one if you're, if you're in Boston, Cambridge. Love to have you.
Okay, thank you. Let's start off with staff, please.
We have no concerns. The only thing that we would be looking for is that, and that we would condition, is that because you guys did a special permit to reduce the parking requirement for this plaza area, we want to see an employee, an employee parking plan, you know, that is enforced by the management there, that, you know, employees can't park, you know, in the front of the site. They need to be in designated spaces, and they need to work with the property management to kind of do that, because parking is going to be tight here. The other thing is, you know, if you are able, you know, I don't know how your many, how your employees get to work, but offering subsidies for public transportation, it is walkable to buy a bus stop, and so just any way that you can reduce the amount of parking that your staff needs is highly desirable.
Yeah, so as far as where people park, we, as Leah and I were talking, we get our steps in, like, we want to park away. The best parking spaces need to be available for the guest. So we would absolutely want any team that did drive, park as far away as you can, basically, walk over. We do offer, as a benefit to our team members, because most of our team members are coming public transportation, so we do have a program, a benefit with our team that, that helps them with their transportation, public transportation, buying T-Passes and things like that. Yeah, so, and, and most of our team honestly does come via public transportation and makes the, makes the steps over there. So there's not a lot of cars associated with our team in our, in our existing cafes, anyway, I can speak to that.
That's really exciting to hear. It's the first time I've ever heard that a company is offering public transit subsidies that has ever come before me as somebody who's worked here for 10 years, so.
It's expensive for a team to get there, and.
It's really important, so.
It's not unusual, like, my, my son's company, he's not in the restaurant business, but they do offer that. You either get parking outside, which they don't encourage, but you get the MBTA pass, one or the other. And I think in, now that they have that, I think, hopefully we'll see more of that. It's become standard in, in other industries as well. And I can tell you, he took, he takes advantage of it, and, and because he has it, really just, it's, it's a big use, so I think that's excellent. Let me start off with the Planning Board to my left with Ms. Natola.
Can I get a funny question here? Do you deliver?
Ah, good question.
We do deliver through the third-party deliveries.
Okay.
You can go onto those, onto our website, or onto those DoorDash, Uber Eats, whatever. We set up our cafes, so it's quick in and out for those delivery drivers in relation to parking and cars moving through the lot. We try to think about that and how we move them through quickly. But yeah, we do, we absolutely do deliver.
Good question.
Ms. Sutherland?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a few questions. Related to the delivery, do you, kind of looking at your floor plan, have like a general area where you make it easy for a delivery to kind of pop in and out?
Yeah, we actually put build-in shelving and such that is dedicated to delivery drivers versus a guest who's picking up.
And is that, would that be near, like, the vestibule? Or I see there's also the door at the far end.
It would be on this one.
It would be kind of here?
No, we bring them in slightly, oh, thank you so much. We bring them in a little bit more because of where the food is made and it's put out. So if you go, you see where it says Juice Bar?
Yeah.
Likely will be like right in that area, right there. So they'll walk in, our register people.
So they'll probably come off the patio?
Will over there, and then where it says Lounge. If you see on the Lounge, on the opposing side, where it's Expo, that's where a manager spends a lot of their time, helping to get guests their food and move them through, so yeah.
So do you think they'd be coming in through the patio?
They would be coming in, in the front door, yeah.
Okay, so I only ask that because then if I look at the proposed site redevelopment, correct me if I'm wrong, but the patio entrance would be not on the side near this parking that abuts it, right? It would, they are likely to park across, across the way, you think? Because they're going to be entering, is, is the door they're going to be entering?
The front door is going to be, if I'm looking at this right of my, yeah, right where the, the hand is there, is on that part of the building, right there.
So not through the patio area?
Yeah.
Patio area is here.
Yeah, so not through the patio area.
Your front door is closest to where the two paces is.
So you don't think they'll be coming in through the patio?
No, because it won't be accessed, I'm sorry.
Just because, I mean, we had the discussion with the other, another tenant on the other building about how likely a food delivery person will be crossing the very busy, because that area, cars are just coming in and out.
Yeah.
And so we had discussed with them, how do we encourage them to, because they're just trying to go quickly, probably not paying attention, so we want to encourage them to enter through a safe way. And if it was, if they're going to be entering through the patio, I would be more concerned about the crossing there. But if they're going to be entering in that side, I guess I'm not as concerned.
Right, it'd be through the main door.
Okay.
Of the cafe.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any pictures of what the patio area would look like?
No, just on this plan.
Okay.
You can see it's two round tables with four chairs on them. It's not a, not a big patio here.
The, the physical patio would remain as it is today, in terms of what's out there for, for Blaze Pizza, so.
No, like awning or umbrellas?
Likely umbrella.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm sure you already know with the umbrellas, we just don't want any advertising on the.
No, we don't do any umbrellas, and colors are all blended with the decor that we have in the cafe.
And the bollards will stay?
Yes.
On the patio?
Sorry, I can't move it any closer. This is the Google Maps that came here in 2019, they didn't go past it.
Perfect. Will there, how will the trash be managed on the patio?
So we have team members. So we deliver food to the guests.
Okay.
That's in the dining room. So we have floor runners who are running food and pre-bussing, and we have bus stations and trash, and nothing gets built up. It's, it's constant, full hands in, full hands out.
Great. Those were my main questions for you. And then I'm just going to, I just want to state the record, I know we've had this conversation quite a few times, and I just want to encourage, you know, the, the owners of this space, Bricksmore, we really need to find a way to allow better walking access. So happy to hear that a lot of your employees will hopefully be taking public transportation. The most popular bus stop is right across the street, which is great, but then that means they need to walk by Wendy's all the way through the plaza to get to you. Not ideal if we had kind of the entrance off the street that we've consistently wanted down the slope. I think that would be a much better option, because then you pop out right there near Life Alive, but I just, you know, hopefully I'll become a broken record enough that Bricksmore will help us find a way to make that a lot easier for employee access, especially now that we've got, hopefully, great tenants that will have folks using public transportation. I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Ms. LaRue?
I have nothing, but I just want to say I concur with Member Sullivan, Sutherland, sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Covino?
Hours of operation, I don't know if I missed that or not, what are your hours?
We open at 7:00 in the morning, we close at 9:00 at night.
At 9:00?
Yes, 9:00 p.m.
So you're, you're also open, obviously, for breakfast?
Yeah, we do breakfast, lunch, and dinner. The full menu is available from 7:00 to 9:00. We have some breakfast-specific items that we run till from 7:00 to 10:30.
If you haven't already, you might want to take advantage of Burlington area Chamber of Commerce, Rick Parker. I know they do a lot with, or try to do a lot with transportation, so you might be able to slip in with something they're doing, and.
That'd be great. Yeah, thank you.
I'm all set, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Covino. Just my, my comment is, I, I haven't been to one of these places, but I've checked out the website, and it looks very appetizing, and I tend to think of myself as a smoothie connoisseur, so I will certainly will be, you know, you'll be challenged on your, on your, on your smoothie.
Challenge accepted.
Take up the challenge there. All right, so let's go to the public. This is a public meeting. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this matter? Nobody? Okay, they have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0-0.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of Life Alive Cafe LLC for special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.6.10 Restaurants, fast order food and takeout of Article 4 of the Town of Burlington zoning bylaws to permit a fast casual restaurant for property located in the General Business BG district and the Aquaphor A overlay district and 91 Middlesex Turnpike, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit A attached.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to Burlington.
Looking forward to the trial.
When do you intend to open?
So all construction and permitting, it'll be somewhere in probably late spring.
Thank you.
Oh, really?
All goes according to plan.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got Item C tonight, public hearing, the application for approval for a special permit pursuant to 4.2.6.10, again. Restaurant, fast food, order takeout, zoning bylaw of 101 Middlesex Turnpike. Kava Metzger Grill LLC is the applicant.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman and board members. For the Record Attorney, Mark Vaughn, here tonight representing Kava, who are coming into the Burlington Shopping Center Plaza, we're obviously still talking about here. This is in the building that was before the board previously, which is 101 Middlesex Turnpike. They're taking over a portion of the space that was most recently occupied by, I believe it was Piara Day Salon, and prior to that, Tower Records. And with me tonight are Patrick Cartier and Katie Russell, who are both with Kava. I know Patrick attended the DCM meeting that we had a couple of weeks back. So I know that we obviously have talked about Kava before, maybe even at a time where we weren't supposed to mention Kava's name, because the lease hadn't been signed, but they obviously are locating in the same space that I mentioned to the board at that time. So it's that location there, on that corner of the property, immediately adjacent to where Tate is locating. So just for those of you that aren't familiar with Kava, I know that Patrick can certainly explain their, their business and kind of what they're, they're after, but there are several Kavas that are in the area. I know that there's one at the, the Woburn Village, is probably, might be the, the closest one, but they are a restaurant operation that are focused on healthy Mediterranean-style cuisine, and they have kind of, well, you did such a great job explaining the operation that I'm going to actually defer to you in terms of the protein, the salad, and all that, but so.
Yeah, so our mission's to bring heart, health, and humanity to food, oops, sorry. So our mission's to bring heart, health, and humanity to food, and it's, it's truly unreal. It's food that fuels you. It's fresh Greek, Mediterranean flair to it. You know, we have traditional hummus, tzatziki, we have our own special crazy feta dip. You know, it's, you can do a salad bowl, a pita, you can do a grain bowl, and everything's customizable. So you can, I think there's over, I forget the exact number, but 100 million options you can choose from, just to have like your go-to flavor, which I think is great. You know, after you eat it, you really, it gives you energy, right? And it's just something to be very proud of, you know? At the end of the day, I've been with Kava now for seven years, come October, and we opened up our first one in New England in Fenway, and been going strong ever since, and very excited to bring, you know, the, the flavors to, to Burlington as well.
Great, thank you. Steph?
Um, so as far as Kava is concerned, and the, um, kind of the use, um, we don't really have any concerns, except that we do, you know, want to see an employee parking plan and make sure that employees know where they're supposed to park, um, and that, you know, that the overall property management, you know, is managing that and making sure that people are adhering to it. Um, and also that, that said parking plan is available, you know, in, you know, the common areas for staff. Um, and I guess I would just wonder, how do your staff generally get to work?
Yeah, so a majority of public transportation, you know, carpooling as well. Um, we do a great job of that, especially in Woburn, uh, just because in Woburn, public transportation is difficult. So we actually coordinate carpools, which I think helps out, uh, a great deal. We also have a CBP plan, commuter benefit plan, um, that team members can, you know, put money into a fund that's tax-free, that they can use for commuter benefits. So it definitely helps in the long run there. Uh, and if they do come and park, uh, the plan would be, you know, furthest away from the restaurant, uh, to ensure that the guests get prime real estate for parking.
That's Bricksmore's desire and goal as well with their tenants, is to have employees park on the, on the perimeter and, you know, not take up the prime spots, so.
Great. Thank you. Uh, why don't I start with, uh, here on the planning board, Ms. LaRue, if you'd care to start?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, first of all, I have to tell you, there's been quite a buzz about Kava coming to town. People are very excited. Um, I've been there before, I know a lot of other people, they're very excited that you're coming, so welcome. My questions are not for Kava so much as for Mr. Vaughn, representing Bricksmore.
Sure.
As you've heard before with the other restaurant that was before us, we're very concerned about people crossing that street. And because of where Kava is located, we think it's very likely that they're going to be parking across, sort of in, along, in front of Life Alive, and crossing, walking across that entry drive. And that's what we're concerned about, because people come down Middlesex Turnpike coming fast, and they take that right-hand turn, and if there's somebody standing in that entry drive.
Right.
We're very worried that there could be a, an injury, um, hopefully not fatal. So we want to look at different ways we can discourage people from crossing. When we did the site plan, we have the crosswalk clearly marked closer to that intersection.
Right.
But we're still concerned that people may cross, in which we had a meeting earlier this week amongst ourselves, trying to figure out, how could we discourage
Thanks.
people from doing that? And all of us talked together about possibly having fencing in front of Kava, sort of where the bollards are, and come around a little bit, make the turn on the corner. I don't know if I'm explaining this very well, so that it would be difficult for someone to cross over there. They'd be better off going to the crosswalk where they'd be safer, and then entering and coming along the sidewalk.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's, and I know this issue came up when we were before the board on the minor engineering change itself, and I don't, we did, and Liz was kind enough to alert me that the, the question might be, uh, raised again, uh, this evening. So if the, if you do recall, I know that you wanted to make sure that we were going to have a barrier along the, um, the strip there where the parking is to the right, uh, where that landscape, the Long Landscape Island is. Um, yeah, thanks, Caleb. So, we, we are providing a ornamental fence along that, um, strip there that.
So is it where the red line is?
No, it's not where the red line is. It's where that, on the right-hand side where the arrow is.
Whatever, okay.
Caleb, I don't know if you can.
Well, across the, across the.
Yeah. Because at the time, I think the concern was folks would park there.
Right.
And then just walk right across the entry aisle.
And that's still the concern.
Right. So we are doing it there. I, I think over in the, the, the corner that you're talking about, that I think, the, yeah, so that, that's the metal fence that we're going to have there. And again, it's a metal, not just a metal fence, but it's a metal fence with a lot of ornamental plantings and, you know, really to look nice. So on the other corner, I mean, I know there's going to be bollards in that area, and there's also going to be a series of, of plantings as well, and I did have a discussion with the landscape architect, uh, today, and, you know, the, the types of plantings that they're going to have are, are shorter plantings, shrubs and bushes and things, so I'm not going to say physically someone couldn't walk through that area, but I, you know, the, the feeling is that those would provide a robust enough kind of visual barrier for folks to not want to, you know, walk across and, you know, get their pants dirty, you know, trudging through dirt and, uh, you know, plantings and whatnot, so.
I guess I would want to have a better understanding of what that would look like. Are the plantings in the ground, or are these raised beds, so then they're even more difficult to get past?
I, I think these particular plantings are actually in the ground, that, as the, the landscape architect has, has designed it, um, but, you know, I, I, I think we're, we're willing to explore other options, if that's what the board would like us to take a look at. Um, so I, I.
Right.
I'm just not sure a, a, a physical barrier, like a fence would, I, I'll let others speak to that, but I, and I think actually Mark Newman from Bricksmore might be on, uh, as well, but we just want to make sure the, the aesthetics match the, certainly safety's a, a priority, right?
We want beautiful safety. We don't want ugly safety.
Right.
And I think that can be achieved either with a decorative fencing, like a wrought iron type fencing in between the bollards, or planters that are just a little bit raised, so then someone can't just walk between the plants, they'd have to
Yeah.
go over them. And very few people are going to do that. But a lot of people are going to walk right between them if it's flat.
Okay.
So that's our concern, and I, if, if, who did you say was here from Bricksmore?
Mark Newman, um, there's a request on mute, Mark, it should show up on your screen.
I'd love to hear from Mark Newman.
Hi, uh, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Yes. Great, thank you. Hello, everybody. Um, we were before you, I want to say now it was two months ago, um, and I wanted to bring up a couple of things. First of all, at that time, we had proposed putting some parking spaces on the right side of that driveway
Uh-huh.
close to where the Kava entrance would be. And we asked for four, I think that they were, were calling temporary, um, short-term spaces for people to pick up, um, food from Kava. And at the time, you felt, rightfully so, that those spaces were too close to the entrance, and you wanted to encourage people to use the crosswalk that's a little further in the site. If you could pull that screen out a little bit, so we could see where the crosswalk is, that would be great?
If you put up this one, it shows the 15-minute parking spots.
Right, so.
Right, I think we all remapped.
Right, so, so, so what we did was, at that time, there were, you had raised the same safety concern, and it's, and it's a valid concern. At the time, we agreed on a couple of things. We agreed, one, that this, you know, without really, you know, and Kava's here tonight to speak to it, but the, you, you, you had agreed to those 10, 15-minute spaces, but you wanted them next to the crosswalk to encourage people to use the pedestrian crosswalk that's deeper into the site than running across the street right by the entrance. You also asked for us to create a barrier, uh, for those parking spaces that are on the right side of the driveway coming in, uh, which we did with enhanced landscaping and a two-and-a-half-foot wrought iron fence. So we, we've done all that. On the left side, on the driveway, on the left side, we've added bollards, and we've added, um, landscaping, which should keep, you know, it should serve as a safety measure. And I, I think what you're saying is that as you've mulled over it, you don't think that that's even enough, and you'd like us to go one step further?
Well, where is the wrought iron fence? I guess that I'm, I'm missing that. Can someone show me?
Yeah. Oh, and we, we discussed it last time. The wrought iron fence runs all the way along there, and its design is to keep people, it's to keep people from, from running across the street. They can't do it unless they're willing to jump the fence.
Right.
And, and, and look, and we're all for creating certain barriers to, and, 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 you know, psychologically encouraging people and physically encouraging people to do the right thing here.
Mm-hmm.
But my only concern with putting more wrought iron fence on the left side is, I, I think at an entrance, it's going to look a little odd. I think it's going to, it's going to, it's going to create a, um, how do I put it? You, you sort of walk in, and it's like these two areas are fenced off from each other. And I, I think to some degree, we're trying to create an integrated whole here, and, and, and sort of connect the energy from one side where Kava is to the other side, yet still push people to make that, to, to cross over at, at the, at the proper pedestrian crosswalk. So what we would prefer to do is a couple of things. One, we thought that right now, when you're making, you know, right now, you can't hop the fence where we're showing it on the right side, but what, I think you raised a concern that, well, maybe somebody's going to walk into the driveway, you know, the, the curb cut that you see there on the right side. Maybe they're going to walk there and try to run across right there. And I'd say a couple of things. One, there's, there is a landscaped island in the middle, um, right there, which we think would provide some additional discouragement, right in the middle of the driveway coming in. Two, we could put up one and maybe two signs at the curb cut that says absolute, you know, no, you know, you know, crossing prohibited, or, 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 or what we would call, I forgot what they call it. It's basically a wayfinder sign that points to where the pedestrian crosswalk is. And we could do that as further encouragement to keep people from running through that curb cut right there. But I, I think beyond that, we could also maybe enhance some of the landscaping on the left side. But I, I think to put a, a, a fence or a barrier there to keep people from crossing from the right side over seems like, it, it seems far away from the cause, if you know what I mean. It seems like you're trying to inhibit the behavior at the, at the end, rather than at the place where it starts, which is on the right side.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, thank.
Thank you.
I actually have a, a thought, and I, I haven't talked to anyone else about this, but I, I wonder if, well, a couple of things. Where the wrought iron fence is, if you added just another section of fencing perpendicular that would further discourage people from going into that lane of traffic? And then maybe what you do when you put your landscaping in between the bollards, you make it unpleasant landscaping to walk around, like holly bushes or things that are scratchy, and you don't want to.
I mean, we, we can, we can do all this. I, I think if somebody really wants to hop the fence and run across the streets, they're going to do it.
Yeah, they will.
Unfortunately, and.
We just want to minimize it.
Yeah.
We just hope to minimize it.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Sullivan, yes.
Um, I have, I actually, I actually have some concerns about putting too much restriction on that side near the entrance, because I agree that like, if we want to stop the behavior, we need to stop it where they're getting out of the car, which they're doing with the wrought iron fence. I also am concerned that, let's say, they don't do that, they don't follow it, they hop and they cross it. I don't want them to get stuck.
[laughing]
I don't want a car coming down, and then then getting stuck, and I'm able to be safe. Also, unfortunately with, you know, the problem we have in this country, I also want people to be able to exit very easily from the building, should they need to, and I'm concerned about also trapping them in by having too much preventative measures there. So I actually have great concern about, although I agree with the original premise, that we want to try to avoid them crossing that busy area, I do have great concern about putting in too much restriction there for purposes of them getting trapped, um, trapped where the cars are moving, or trapped in the building when they're trying to exit for emergency purposes. So I still am very much in favor of the original plan of putting the wrought iron and a lot of landscaping on that parking area across the way. And I think also the fact that now the 15-minute spaces are at the top of the parking will help drive that through the crosswalk, but I do love the idea of a wayfinding sign being like crosswalk over there. Um, so.
Sure.
That's just what I would add to that.
Okay, sure.
What would you think about adding one additional section of fencing perpendicular to that fencing that's already installed?
What do you mean perpendicular?
So at the end, see where it's blue?
Yeah.
At the end there, where the hand is, there you go, right where Caleb drew.
I don't like that. I mean, I think people are going to walk around it if they want to go this direction.
It makes it a little harder, that's all.
It does, it's.
Just a thought.
Yeah. I, 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 look, and I think you would.
Can we put the sign there that says, "Do not cross here, walk that way"?
Yes.
Yes, I was actually asking Jess what she thought.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, uh, I'm not opposed to the fence being extended there. I think though, to the point that they'll still walk around that, I think a sign might be more beneficial, or both. Yeah, like a way, I think certainly there needs to be wayfinding, the wayfinding sign will be helpful there, that says, "Do not cross here, the crosswalk is that way." Um, I would like to see that there.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Cavino?
Uh, a, a couple of things. One, one general thing, and that is, uh, as with a lot of multi-tenanted, uh, locations, uh, we, lots of times only see the landowner when, uh, projects, uh, change or come up. And I, I was wondering if Mr. Newman would commit to, for instance, what we're talking about now, whatever we decide, whatever ends up in the permit, if for some reason it doesn't work, we'd like to see you come back. And if the staff was to say, you know, Mr. Newman give you a call and say, you know, what we tried there, you know, the perpendicular fence, it really didn't work until, and we get to come up with something else, uh, would you be minimal to, uh, to coming back on at least an informal basis?
Yes, of course, for, absolutely, and, and we're always open to, we want to know what's going on, we want to know your thoughts about how the property's operating. Um, and, and I believe one of, you know, we, we just got a draft resolution the other day, um, reflecting the, um, approval that you gave us a couple of months ago. And, and in that resolution was, uh, a request that we revisit in six months the parking and traffic, and I think that's a good time to sort of come back and take a look at things. Um, you know, I guess I'd say I, I, I wouldn't want it to be tied to the special use permit that's before you today. I think it, you know.
No, I'm not, I'm not trying to do that.
I, I, I don't, I, I want to hand the baton back to Kava
No.
so that they could answer all of your questions about what an awesome restaurant they're going to be operating, and the fact that I go there for lunch so often, I'm so excited for them to come in. But yeah, absolutely, we, as, as part of the, um, earlier approval, that's, that was one of the conditions that I thought was, um, thoughtful. Um, I think we need to work on the wording, but, but, um, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cavino. Ms. Natola?
Uh, I actually like the original plan that we have here. I would add just maybe the sign, because I'd be afraid if you don't go with the plants, it's not going to look that inviting, and you still want to draw business to that area. And I'm trying to think of the other Kava in Woburn, how it's at, but it's very busy with that area, and I don't see it as, as crazy. They've put plants, it looks nice, and it, it's tighter than some of this area here, and it's working just fine. We walk through there all the time, and, um, we walk over there, and it seems to be working, I think, just fine. So you just, you don't want to make it, I think, so much that people aren't going to be invited to find it, like, how the hell do you get into this place, or whatever, either? So, um, I think the sign is sufficient as far as where Jess was talking about where the sign is. I think that would be a great idea for safety measures, but I do think, I like the plants better than a fence for the simple reason it's inviting.
Thank you, Ms. Natola. Um, I, the only comment I have is, is, I think the intention here is not for the folks that are going to be, um, walking into Kava, and they're going to be, you know, they're, they're going to be, you know, taking their time, and, you know, putting their computers up and spending some time there. I, I think our concern here, at least my concern, is the folks that are going, the runners that are, they're doing the, uh, the pickup, and, you know, they have, they have, uh, they're also, uh, guidelines, if you will, that, and how they do that, and it tends to be a bit more chaotic than the, the standard customer that's going in to spend some time there. So that's my main concern, is that they're going to be, they're going to be jumping through hoops, because the, what their motivation is to get as many orders as they can, so the quicker they do it, the more money they make, so. And we, we did actually, I think we recommended, if I recall correctly, we did actually recommend that, uh, the, the Tate, and now we can talk about Kava, that that actually be rotated, so they both be in the front versus, it's, it's, it's a very awkward place that you both be in the front, versus it's, it's, it's a very awkward place that you have with the cover and the door, right along Middlesex Turnpike, and where the rest of the parking is. So I know we recommended that when they first came to us, and, and for some reason, that was, you already said on that, but again, I, I think you might find over time that that might have been a, a, a better solution, and we wouldn't even have to have this problem with everybody coming into the front in both places. It's just, and, and it would be a long, it'd be a longer stall, which, yeah, you have a, a longer tate in Newton, works out great, so I, I'm not sure what the motivation was not to fall through with that. So let's, as a board, decide if we're going to, what kind of conditions you want to put on that?
I have one more question.
No, please.
Sorry. Knowing that this has opened pretty late, what's the lighting plan for the patio when it's dark out?
Yeah, patio lights should stay on throughout the, the night until we close, and then they, they're usually on a timer, so we can set them. So if you have a specific time that they need to be off, we can do that as well. But it should be well-lit throughout business operations.
Knowing they're close to the road, do we have any concerns with the lighting being disruptive to drivers?
I don't.
No? Sorry, that's not the question.
And there's not, there's gonna be any TVs on the patio or anything like that? We always put those in the conditions. We know we've had that in the past. Ms. Larue?
I just wanted to point out, because I've been to the Kava in Woburn, and I agree it works. I think what's different about this site is that we all know, as residents, how quickly people take that turn into that drive. They're flying down Middlesex Turnpike. If the light is green, if the light is red, we're all good. But if the light is green, they come flying down there and they take that turn.
Yeah.
I understand and agree with members of Sutherland's concern about, about the fencing on the other side causing entrapment, so to speak. We don't want to trap people, that was, I hadn't thought of that, and, and that's valid. I, I definitely want the signs, I think we, I would like my members to consider the additional piece of fencing that's perpendicular, and I definitely think revisiting in six months is a great idea. And I, I just want you to understand that this comes from a place of concern. We don't, it's not good business for you, and it's certainly not good for us if someone gets injured on that drive.
I totally agree. I, I, I appreciate these comments. I think it's an important, important for us to make this as safe as possible, sure.
Okay, thank you. So, for the board, let's make a decision on how we want to condition that?
I think we all agree on the signage.
Yeah, and I'm not opposed to the, the continued, I mean, it's not gonna do any harm, having the continued fence there. Will it stop them? I don't know.
Neither.
Maybe, is there, could it be a part of the condition where we certainly do the sign, but because we agreed to revisit in six months, at that time, they understand that there might be then the request to add that additional perpendicular fence?
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, yeah, as long as we come, I, I think really if we can, what typically happens is, is we, we, we let these things go and forget to revisit in six months.
Yeah.
So what I'd like to do, you know, maybe on a running spreadsheet that I'll keep up there, we'll say, but I would like to see it upon completion, so let's say Kava comes in, you know, spring, or whatever the timeframe might be, let's go six months from that.
So around this time next year.
So about a year, right?
So is that, can I ask a question? Is that, is this a condition of the special permit approval for Kava, or is this a modification of the condition of the site plan approval that, that, that we obtained?
That's a good question, Steph.
I mean, it depends upon how you guys want to do it, Mark.
Yeah, so I mean, we do have the special permit that was granted for the, the shared parking, obviously, that the, we, we spent some time on working through the shared parking study and all that.
It hasn't been filed yet.
Right, right. So I think that, to the extent that the condition needs to be framed in a man, which it reads currently that after a certain number of months, I think it's six months from opening, and of, it references three different restaurants in the decision, Tate, Kava, and, and Life Alive, obviously, but what I'm thinking is maybe, you know, six months after Kava opens, that that study would evaluate the, the parking and interior pedestrian safety aspects, and if it shows that there's a reason for, you know, further supplemental plantings in this particular corner that you had in Red there, or some form of additional barrier, because it's just, it's, it's not working properly, then, you know, I think that would be something that would need to be recommended based on empirical analysis.
I think, I think language, though, Mark, should be, if the planning board decides not on the study shows.
There is no study, yeah.
Right, okay.
Mr. Chair, I would like to suggest, though, that the signage.
The signage being included?
Be connected to the special permit, so that way it happens.
Sure.
When Kava opens.
So I think, yeah, what, what conditioning here, because it, now we know that the restaurant's name officially, and we know what that practice is, I think that's what we're taking into consideration, that's unique to this particular applicant, okay? So sign, revisit, would, to stay at six months? Anybody else need to comment?
What happens is we come back, we have the discussion, we say something's not working out, we need to do something different, what's the ramification if it's not done?
Well, that's, it would be a condition of, what we would do, we'd condition the site, we would say, here's what we need to be done, and then it goes to the billing inspector for compliance. Is that correct?
Yes.
So does it then come to fines, if?
It does, yeah, ultimately, yeah. Yeah, we're, we're really concerned about that, and, and again, this is for, for the folks that aren't local here, just, you know, the folks that drive by there many, many times, if you get the green light, you, you're going down Middlesex Turnpike, heading north at a good clip, and you, you know, squealing your tires right across from Boreda Cafe, right into the plaza. So it's just, it's just local knowledge here that we're trying to infer here, and, and the best way to protect the folks, but again, I have the opportunity for the, for the applicant.
And I do think, if I could, Mr. Chairman, too, it's a very valid point in terms of, you know, people coming down the road at, at maybe a higher rate of speed. But I think the fact that the space has been vacant for so long now, too, though, people just aren't anticipating that there's gonna be any activity there, too, right?
Yes, that's really true.
So as soon as there's something there, I think people are gonna realize that, heck, you know, I, I need to be more mindful of, of what's going on in here.
I hope so.
Yeah, and not on their cellphones, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's do that. So may have motion.
Public hearing?
It's a public hearing, anyone else? It's a public hearing, it is, yeah. So we'll have a, anyone in the audience that wants to discuss this matter? Anybody up here? No? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of Kava Mesa Grill LLC for a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.6.10 Restaurant Fast Order Food and Takeout Article 4 of the Town of Burlington zoning bylaws to permit a fast casual dining restaurant for property located in the general business BG District and partially in the Aquifer A and Water Resource WR Overlay District, 101 Middlesex Turnpike, subject to the terms and conditions contained Exhibit A attached and as amended.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five, zero, zero. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you all, appreciate your time, thanks.
Those restaurants are killing my budget.
All right, minutes to come in next meeting, maybe?
Yeah, for the next meeting.
Okay, discussion. Seth?
Sure. Just wanted to give you guys an update on the work that we're trying to kind of convene a subcommittee on recreational marijuana. You know, we had proponents from town meeting come to kind of bring us a proposal that is not, it's gonna be printed in the warrant, but it's not going to be voted on. We continued that discussion to October, but it was discussed at the last meeting that, you know, we should really set up a subcommittee, kind of internally, with different boards and committees to figure out, is this something that we even want to consider and pursue? Is, you know, does the public want this, you know, internally, how, you know, what it, what is, you know, how do we kind of gauge that? And so, right now, I know that, from Paul, that, that they are discussing figuring out that, members of that subcommittee at the, at the select board hearing on Monday. I do know that we do have a member of the Ways and Means Committee who is, is, has been chosen. And then I, I know that I still need to reach out to the Board of Health to discuss that with them, to say, hey, you know, what is, you know, who, do you want to be on this? And kind of just figure out how, how we want to move forward with it. First being, you know, is this something that, you know, the town wants? How do we gauge that? Second of all, is it worth our time and money? You know, what, you know, what are we, you know, what can we project? You know, is this going to really, are we really gonna reap the financial benefits of this? You know, how, how does it compare to like, what Melissa Tentaklis is doing in the Mulrode Corridor, you know? Is that, is, you know, what's that? So I think it's really just a preliminary discussion, figure out where we are and how to move forward, and kind of more information and data gathering, more than anything else, making it, than more than making any real policy decisions. So that's kind of where that stands.
Ms. Larue?
Just a quick question. I know I'm on this subcommittee, who else is?
Brenda is also on. You and Brenda are on this subcommittee.
If she can't make it, I could be a backup, because my group hasn't really had any meetings for housing.
Okay, right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Will they be starting that up soon?
I hope so. I'm trying to, I'm trying to keep that, the ball rolling on it, I'm trying to keep.
It's a subcommittee of the planning board, right? We're just deciding for the other, who else is on it?
I think.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, if, if, if there's no interest from anybody else, we go with it.
Right, right.
That's fine.
This is technically a zoning.
Right.
I mean, I mean, technically, yes, but from a planning perspective, and from, you know, a town administration perspective, and staff perspective, I, you know, I want, basically, I want to get information from the whole, you know, the whole boards and, boards and committees, basically on, you know, as far as staff's time. Where do you want us to spend it? Whether or not it's, it's like, you know, I don't think the, for me, at least, I don't think the label is important. I think what's really important is that we make sure that we're all on the same page, whether it's, you know, a planning board subcommittee, or a select board subcommittee, or it's, you know, board of, you know, whatever it is, I just want to make sure that we are all on the same page and working together, and that we all know where we stand, because there's so many moving parts, when you're talking about this. It's general bylaw, it's zoning bylaw, it's where is it going, it's Board of Health regulations, it's dealing with the state. And so, from a staff perspective, I, that's kind of how I am viewing this subcommittee, you know.
And can we ask a member of police and fire to be a part of the subcommittee?
Yep. I can speak, I can reach out to the chief. Both chiefs, actually.
Great, thank you. And talking about priorities for the, for the, for the planning group, middle housing and the ADA housing law that just happened, so that I would, I would suggest that that's probably the priority.
Yeah.
Right?
Sure.
And recreation marijuana, at least.
I would think my somebody would be.
So is there any update on that?
On the ADU bylaw? So I did go to the first luncheon learn for the Massachusetts, you know, Planners Association.
Thank you.
They gave a brief overview with their attorney on how the law is interpreted. You know, again, you can't, you can't require that a family member is in it, you know, has to be under 900 square feet. I think they're leaving it up to the town whether or not it is attached or detached. We can't, zoning cannot dictate ownership of these units, so, you know, from what their attorney said, and again, this is still the beginning stages, you know, if somebody wanted to condoise their property, if they have an ADU and they wanted to condoise it, so they were, be selling a two-family as opposed to a one-family.
Yeah.
That would technically be allowed. But that's allowed, that would be the entire state, right? But the other thing is, I don't know, the financial benefit or drawbacks of that, I, I don't, I don't really know that yet.
So is that, so would that mean that Burlington does not make a decision whether it can be condoised or not?
We legally cannot, because the zoning bylaw cannot dictate ownership.
That would, that would probably be just the building, not the, in other words, in a condominium operation. All the property is held in common owner.
Right.
And everybody owns their individual.
And a certain percentage of the, of the common area surrounding the property.
Yeah.
So I, I've, I've been a condo, so what it does is you have, you have that ownership of your property, and then for the rest of the common area, which will get taken care of with, you know, whether there's a pool or, or things, what you do is you take a percent of that, so let's say you have the larger unit, right, which, where the 70%, right? And then you get 30%. So the larger unit owner, if it was a condo, would be responsible financially for 70% of the common area.
That's, that's not actually usually located exactly, it's just a percentage.
It's a percentage of the overall, so that's how the upkeep would, you get, you, you're on the hook for 70% of it.
Yeah.
Or you, you wouldn't necessarily divide it, because then you get into the property, so it's got to be a common area that.
Right, so, I mean.
It's a little tricky.
So it's, it's kind of an interesting concept, and something that is, again, at the very beginning stages of that, and hasn't really gone through the court. So that is one thing that they did mention, and so just thinking about that, you know, if you set up, you would have to set up a condo association with you and ADU, but, so that's one thing. The other thing, again, and I want to reiterate, is that DHCD, which is now HLC, Housing, Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. So instead of Housing and Economic Development, Economic Development has their own office, and Housing and Livable Communities has their own. So they, they are the ones that did the rules and regulations for MBTA communities by law, and so the, the law that the legislature passed states that HLC can promulgate rules and regs for these. I can tell you that on this call, the director of HLC was on. Again, they haven't started that process yet, they're, I think they're, they have a lot on their plate. However, point being that she was on there and taking notes, because there are a lot of really great questions about different ownership styles and things, and so they, she was there to kind of just listen to the things that, you know, planners would be dealing with and thinking about, which was good, so. But it is something that I do want to, we will be bringing to, to January town meetings, something, yep.
Do we have any deadlines that we need to meet right now?
So as, so February.
From the state.
From the state. The law goes into effect, I believe it's February 4th, which is after our January town meeting.
Okay.
So.
So we need to pass something in January?
Correct.
So they need to get their rules and regs together?
Or we're gonna pass something, and if their rules and regs come out, we can amend it. I mean, I think that we, you know what I mean? So that would be mine.
Thank you.
Mine.
With, with that in mind, what's the dates that we have to do to back into that?
So I would have to double-check the calendar, so I can tell you that Lynn Mills, who is in charge of the warrant, she did a shared calendar, so it's, it's in my Google calendar, but usually the end of October is when drafts of the zoning is due.
So we don't have a lot of time.
Nope, but.
Again, we don't have much time.
We don't have much time. However, I'm not as concerned, because there are a lot of communities that already have ADU bylaws, and we're not reinventing the wheel, we just need to make sure that the bylaw that we do choose, we can change it and amend it to meet, you know, the needs of Burlington, but also meet, you know, what the law states as well. So it's, you know, it's not an insurmountable thing.
I don't think this is gonna be an easy thing at town meeting.
Nope.
No.
What happens if it's not passed?
If it's not passed, then people, you know, if you wanted to go in and get a building permit to build an ADU on February 4th, you could.
With no restrictions, no rules, no restrictions.
So there's the incentive for town meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's in everybody's best interest for, it's in, you know, right? So it, it is gonna be a hot topic, I think we're gonna hear a lot of people displeased.
Yeah, plus another state putting up required signs, yeah.
But we also, I mean, we need town meeting to recognize that the repercussions for doing nothing are worse than anything we could bring to them.
The other thing I think about as well, is that I know that, you know, and I'm sure we all know, that there are houses in town that have been already subdivided, that are illegal, that probably don't have permitted electrical and plumbing and all that stuff.
Firewalls.
Firewalls, and, you know, basic safety measures, so I think that this goes a long way, just kind of for safety, be, and then I think.
But are they grandfathered in the look of what they have right now, they won't, they're not gonna come back.
Not if they're permitted.
They're probably not permitted, I bet.
They're not permitted, but this gives them a path to.
To get permitted.
To do it. So if you were somebody who wanted to sell your house, say, and you were selling, you know, you had a split level, and you, the bottom was, you were considering an ADU, you know, before you sell it, you might, you know, you might want to figure out how to bring it up to code, right? So, you know, I think we'll get things that way, as well, but.
On the, on the same note, because with all the activity we have with MBTA communities, and, and how that went through town meeting, I haven't heard too much about that at all. MBTA communities, kind of, went by the do, so maybe just to allay town meetings' fears that, you know, that we, we, we're not doing our homework on this, and we're kind of going the right path for these things.
Yeah.
It's gonna be okay. It's going to be okay.
This looks like it's a little different.
Oh, it's very different.
Because the state has said by right--
Yeah.
--to do this.
Yeah.
MBTA communities was a little different, where they said you have to put in--
Yeah.
--set in zoning districts.
Zoning, right.
You don't really have to do anything other than zone it.
Mr. Chair, would it make sense for us to sort of give town meeting a heads-up in September?
Mm-hmm.
Just that we're working on this, that it's coming in January, that it, the law goes into effect in February, so we're on a tight deadline, and encourage them to watch our meetings and attend if they want to participate, because it's going to move fast.
Yeah, I can speak to the moderator and ask to, to do something upfront at town meeting.
Yeah.
Have a report of, of, you know, the department or whatever, just to say, get a heads-up.
I was actually going to ask, I know this unfortunately puts more work on your plate, but can we do like a small educational session? I mean, because I think, it would be, I would love like a dedicated educational session outside of our meetings before we jump into it, and I think if we offer that to town meeting--
Because I bet they're not going to really understand it fully, because we don't really understand everything.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think, I think it would be beneficial, I think, for us as a board, and then also, then we shall come and ask questions.
One thing I can tell you is I know that the Massachusetts Planners Association is doing a follow-up, the Massachusetts Planning Association, they're doing a follow-up lunch and learn session on the ADUs, and I, they, you know, they don't, you know, I can send you the link to jump on.
Somebody want to?
Yeah, I'm going to send it, well, so that's one thing, but all, but I, so that's one way I can do it.
You're thinking more of an outreach, local outreach.
You were talking about outreach. Well, I'm thinking because in that educational session, we can actually talk about Burlington.
Yes.
We can actually talk about, like--
Specifically.
What you brought up. There are likely, you know, unpermitted, there are already some safety concerns, and--
Yeah, well, what would be the benefit, like, is to do it as opposed to not do it? Because if there's really no great benefit for somebody, why would they do it if they're really doing it already illegally, that how?
But they can't sell their house if it's--
Well, one of them I'd sell, though, they're just, I'm just saying--
See, I think like for the, I mean, yes, I mean, obviously send around the link, but I think for us to be able to kind of talk about it as Burlington would be beneficial.
I 100% agree with you, and I think that part of any planning process, an educational component, as well as kind of, you know--
Yeah.
--working through it, you know, it, it--
Maybe--
Some public meetings on--
I mean, wise, maybe we need to have a public meeting probably end October, early November, before the holiday season.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, do a plan.
I'd say October, for sure.
Oh, yeah, definitely October. I would even, I mean, I would even start before the, before the languages do, do, like, I think that--
And I think we should definitely invite town meeting, but I think we should open it up to members of the public as well.
Oh, yeah.
You know, like, we had that housing thing once upstairs at Marshall Simons, that was very well-attended, something like that, I think.
Yeah, I mean, the other question is, this might be put in cart before the horse, are we going to get more attendance if it's virtual or in person?
Oh.
Also, if it's in person, it's hard to, unless it's, you know, downstairs in the annex basement, it's hard to kind of--
People like virtual, because they're, they can just hop on and hop off, I think, sometimes.
That's true. So, we'll see.
I'm open to whatever you guys decide, I just think October's probably the right--
I agree.
Thank you.
The benefit of virtual is we can report it, too.
100%.
And people can watch it back.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So, I'm going to send you guys that link anyway, there, there were other members of planning boards--
Oh, okay.
--that were on the first one.
Oh, okay.
So, I'll send that to you guys ahead of time, but I think that definitely a public info session and just a heads-up, hey, is in early October is a great idea.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, correspondence.
Wait, no, 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 we didn't talk about the middle housing.
Middle housing. So, I, so as promised at the last planning board meeting, this is a draft of the language for a middle housing overlay district, and I just realized I didn't give you the map, which I have, and I didn't print out, so I'll send it to you.
Okay.
But basically, this is, honestly, this is language that I wish was in our town center overlay.
Yeah.
But, so, I think it's a, it's a good exercise in just understanding kind of like form-based code and, and design standards of a, you know, a compact, walkable neighborhood, and just what those are. But this is, again, you know, 12 units an acre, multifamily housing, two families, three families, you know, and with, you know, design standards. Yeah, it's 20 pages if you really don't want to do 20 pages, the last, you know, the Section 10 design standards are kind of really where you want to dig in. Also, the affordability, so this was based off a 40R district that, I don't know, that the town of Amherst had proposed, I don't know where it went as, for their town meeting, but it is, it's very well-written, and if you've ever been to downtown Amherst, I would encourage, do like a Google tour, if you haven't, Google Maps tour of it. It's very walkable, kind of compact, three-story buildings, housing and, and businesses above, retail on the first floor. So, I think it's a, it's a good model for what our town center should be, you know, requires, parking has to be in the back, and, you know, a lot of the things that Joe has been preaching for years and years and years, and you too, Bill, so it's all, it's all good stuff. Where else was I going with this? So, I think, I, basically, I just wanted to send this out to you guys, read it, give me comments, if you have questions, if you're like, Liz, this is what, what, you know, you know, reach out to me, comments.
And we'll talk about it the next--
We can talk about it at the next meeting, you know, and so, yeah, that's kind of it.
Is the goal for this to be a January town meeting?
Yes.
I think--
Okay. So, we, we'd have to wrap this up by?
October.
October.
Yep, at least it's a great start, yep.
There's a lot in--
It's a lot, it's a lot, but a great, great work, again, benchmarking, best-in-class, it's, it's terrific.
And I personally really want to push to get this done in January, we've been putting it off for a while, and January is where we're supposed to bring our zoning bylaws. If you do it in May, you don't get attention, because we get at the end of the agenda after three nights, and people don't want to talk about it anymore.
Yep, yep, great, okay.
If I may, Mr. Chair--
Please.
--I wanted to report on the police station.
Let's get just the correspondence, none, reports from town council, none, subcommittee and police station subcommittee.
Okay, police station subcommittee, thank you, Mr. Chair. The police station subcommittee had not met in quite some time, we had a meeting today, they've been working hard in the background, I just wanted to quickly give a rundown. The plan is that they will be going out to bid next July with construction starting in fall of 2025. They are going to be doing more community outreach, hopefully going to have something set up at the election in November, because there'll be a lot of people coming to the high school at that point, so they can share some information there.
What type of information, the design or?
Hopefully, a rendering of the outside of the building, and hopefully also, not a site plan, but they'll hopefully be able to show how the building they hope will be situated on the lot. And some of the things that I'm, we're hoping they can address, concerns that neighbors have brought forward regarding removal of trees and access and egress, I did want to say now, for anyone who's listening, that there have been some deep concerns on the part of neighbors, that there may be an access point out to sleeper drive, that is not the case, that is not what is being planned, and I want everyone who's worried about that to--
That was--
Feel better.
That's right.
It's not happening, it's not, it's not on the plan at all. So, we can put people's concerns to, to rest about that. So, that's it.
Any sense of percentage of land they're going to take with the Grandview Farm Field?
They did not have a, an early site plan for us to look at today, I'm hoping that will be at the next meeting, along with a better, a new rendering. They did introduce the project management firm that was just selected, but they had just started about a week ago, so they haven't had time to get some of this together, and I think we'll hear more at the next meeting, which hopefully will be in about a month.
Okay. Any other subcommittee, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, on the Fox Hill--
Yes.
--school walk-through, I did take that, and it did seem very much that a school is needed, they had, you know, I mean, they tried to keep it in very nice shape, but it's definitely seen its day as far as any classrooms that, not classrooms, but like areas where they had to put people, because there wasn't enough room in closets and things of that, you know, so I think it's well-needed.
I was by the Pine Glen School the other day, and, right before it opened, and, which is older than Fox Hill.
Mm-hmm, and has a lot of the same problems.
It has the same problem, but they were throwing AC units up on the top, so I, you know, was interested that they, they did that to kind of, kind of keep that one going, I guess, for a little bit longer.
And I think, this is kind of outside of our purview, but I mean, I agree with you, Tony, and I don't think anyone is saying that Fox Hill doesn't need to be replaced. I think the concern that I'm hearing in the community is that where does that leave Pine Glen?
Right. Okay, any other subcommittees?
Well, can I just say one thing about that? Why, what I don't understand is if it's in such bad condition.
Which one?
Both.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, like, why are we not addressing both?
That's the question.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, but it doesn't mean, like, don't, don't fix Fox Hill, but why, why aren't we trying to fix both, is all I'm saying. I don't think you actually need a mega building, because it causes more problems sometimes with the traffic area.
Right, but what the school communities--
But at the same time, because the people of Pine Glen made it very clear on their meetings that they want that school, but I'm sure they would like equally updates.
I'm sure they would, but right now--
But I'm just saying--
The school building plan has Fox Hill going, and then the high school, and Pine Glen not getting addressed probably till 2035.
Yeah, I, I think that's unacceptable personally, but--
I would agree with you.
Right, but I'm just saying, I feel bad for that--
Sure, of course, of course, yeah, okay.
You know, I didn't see that inside of the school, but I'm sure if it's in the same community--
Right. Any other subcommittees?
One, no other subcommittee--
New business, unfinished business, how about new business?
New business. I wanted to talk about scheduling a planning board retreat.
Hmm.
Oh. Are we really going to go?
If everybody bet, you, yes, we're going to do it. So, historically, it's kind of been done on Wednesday evenings, and I was, and, you know, we do, we have, you know, something for dinner, and we sit down and kind of just talk about kind of legislative priorities, and kind of what we want to be doing, and